Family that's represented here today with your presence. It brings joy and peace. May protect and strengthen these families to support and nurture one another as they serve our community here in Mobile. Also, Lord, thank you for the staff of our leaders that play such an integral part, working tirelessly in supportive roles that keep offices and officials running smoothly and effectively. Empower them with your spirit to have a balance between work and home so that they might have a fruitful life filled with purpose and joy. And God, ultimately, we pray that your kingdom come and your will be done here on earth as it is in heaven. And may you receive all honor, glory, and praise now and forever. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, we pray with you, with the Holy Spirit, lives and reigns, one God, forever and ever. Amen.
Brokaw, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our Mobile City Council meeting Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, any type of electronic device, at this time, please put on the off or the barber position, the off or the barber position. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than two o'clock PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified through the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time passed expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no personal undue applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of October nineteenth.
Don't move a second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? My clerk.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. Good to see everyone here this morning. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to join us. Just give you a report on a couple of items. Yesterday, well, Sunday and Monday, I had an opportunity to join the mayors of the nine largest, the nine largest cities other than Mobile, called the Big Ten Mayors in Auburn. Keeping in mind that I'm an Alabama graduate, it's been quite a while since I've been to Auburn. But I can just tell you that for all Alabamians, you know, we are very fortunate to have two schools like the University of Alabama and Auburn University. The facilities that we saw at Auburn were amazing. My personal take is that the new culinary school that they have is probably not another facility like that in the United States. It's brand new and it's an amazing facility. But the interaction is really about the ten mayors and the things that we collaborate on to try to move the ball forward all across this city, whether it be public safety or economic development. But it's the sharing of ideas, not just the mayors, but parts of our staff, and it's really proved very beneficial, I think, to all the cities. One of the things that we did yesterday was we held a press conference along with Anaya Blanchard's family. Anaya Blanchard was killed by an individual that was out on bail. And the Naya's law, actually, as it was in the process of being done, she was killed during a time when the legislature was debating this law. And so her name got attached to this bill. I'll tell you, that that bill started right here in Mobile, Alabama, with three shootings by an individual that we pleaded with the judge not to release this individual. And the judge said that, according to state law, that he had to grant bond. And he said, if you want to change that, you change the Constitution. Under the direction of the time Chief Jim Barber, we found one of our legislative members, Chip Brown, that wrote the legislation, had sponsored it, carried it through the legislature, and it passed last year. And so on Election Day, November eighth, you will have an opportunity to vote yes for Amendment one. And in doing so, you will give judges the discretion of whether, because of somebody's past history and the belief that they will recommit a crime if released, that judge can choose to hold them without bail. We think it's a huge step forward. It's something that's embraced by all ten mayors and many other law enforcement organizations and just public safety organizations across the state. So again, that's Anaya's Law, Amendment one, November eighth. And I'd say this, it is a bipartisan effort. If you could have seen the the family that spoke of their daughter being killed when they thought they had left her safely at college, it was a very heartrending situation. Veriting from that, I'll talk about Brookley by the Bay Public Workshop. It's been one of those, but we're going to have the second one. And it's really all about the future of that park. And that first public workshop that we had may have been the most well-attended workshop that we've had of any thing that we've been doing in the city of Mobile, certainly in the last nine years. So anybody that was not able to be there the last time, this next workshop will be on November tenth, and it's at the James Seal Community Center on Texas Street, from five thirty to seven thirty, November tenth, five thirty to seven thirty, at the James Seals Community Center. And the focus of this workshop will be to review a couple of the master plan options that have been developed based on the first workshop and other input that has been held up to this point, been received at this point. Last weekend, we held, I would call it, a very successful household hazardous waste event. We had over two hundred and fifty vehicles and collected over thirty-five thousand pounds of hazardous waste, which will no longer have the opportunity to go into our landfills and, you know, pollute our underground water streams. Anyway, a big event. The next one will be March eleventh. Moctoberfest. Last week, I reminded you that Moctoberfest is coming October twenty ninth at Melavanna Park. There'll be a full day of activities, starting with a five K fun run, games, inflatables, a live DJ, costume contests, and closing out the night with a live concert. Special bonus to that is that animal services will be there, and they'll be bringing pets that are available for adoption. So if your heartstrings gets tugged, or if your children's heartstrings get tugged by wanting a pet, you may want to not go to the pet part of this because you may end up taking a dog home. All right. So at this time, I have a couple of proclamations that I would like to read. The first one is for the Turkish Republic Day, and I think we have some representatives. Is there a event on that? Yes? If you could just come to the podium, and I'll read it, and then I'll come present it to you. So whereas on October twenty ninth, nineteen twenty-three, the date of the founding of the Republic of Turkey by Mustafa Kemal Adeturk, and whereas Turkey is the only secular democracy with a majority Muslim population that has supported the U.S. in every major conflict since the Turkish War and made significant contributions to the United States' foreign policy in the Balkans, the Middle East, Central Asia, and the Caucasus, and has played a critical role in international efforts for peace, prosperity, and stability. And whereas modern Turkey has become an integral part of NATO and remains an important U.S. and NATO ally, and whereas Turkey is one of the first allies to show unconditional solidarity with our nation in the war against terrorism and has demonstrated its commitment to the values of liberty, diversity, and justice, as well as to the long-term strategic partnership with the United States of America. And whereas Americans of Turkey's descent in the city of Mobile, Alabama, have played a significant role in the educational, cultural, economic, and civic development of our community through sharing their rich cultural heritage and through their dedication and the responsibilities of good citizenship. And whereas the Turks and Turkish Americans will be celebrating the Turkish Republic Day on October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, I, therefore, William S. Thompson, the hundred and eighth mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim October twenty ninth as Turkish Republic Day in the city of Mobile.
Good morning, Council President, Council Vice President, Council Members, and Mayor Simpson, and everybody in this room. I've been living in the state of Alabama over twenty years. I'm an Auburn graduate, and I received my PhD at the University of Alabama, so I'm both University of Boar Eagle and Roll Tide. I'm the president of Turkish American Association of Alabama and also Southeastern Region VP of Assembly of Turkish American Associations, which represents over fifty Turkish American organizations throughout the United States. As an American citizen with a Turkish descent, I'd like to share with you all that Turkish Americans live in the city of Mobile in the state of Alabama. They are doctors, engineers, professors, moms, dads, you know, husbands and wives, and brothers and sisters. They play a significant role in their communities and in their cities. Therefore, this proclamation is very meaningful for all Turkish Americans. And again, I'm truly honored to be here to receive this proclamation, recognizing Turkish Republic Day in the city of Mobile. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next one is Dr. Valerie James. I know that you have a whole bunch of your friends and contemporaries with you, so if you can approach the podium with whomever you want to bring to the podium with you. Huh? So y'all can all come down? Appreciate y'all coming today. This is the proclamation. It reads, whereas the Mobile metro area is recognized as one of the fastest-growing areas of women-owned farms for growth and the number and economic impacts. Whereas over one hundred and fifty-three, fifty-three thousand women-owned small businesses in the state of Alabama are generating millions in revenue and making a significant impact on the Mobile economy. And whereas the city of Mobile values local women-owned and small businesses and celebrates the diversity of ownership and goods and services that they provide, as well as the contributions they make to our community. And whereas under the leadership of the inaugural president, Dr. Valerie James, founding board of directors and committee members, January two thousand and twenty-three will mark the National Association of Women-Owned Businesses in Alabama, Alabama's chapter's two-year anniversary, which has over sixty women-owned business owners in all major markets in the state of Alabama. Nabo's local mission is to create a platform to expand visibility, access, resources, opportunities, and capitals for our new numbers. And whereas Nabo serves as the unified voice of America's more than eleven-point-six-billion million-owned women businesses, representing the fastest-growing segment of the economy. Nationally, the organization works to propel women-owned businesses into greater economic and social spheres of power. Now, therefore, I, William S. Thompson, the hundred and eighth mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two as the National Association of Women Business Owners Alabama Chapter Day in the city of Mobile, during this twenty-fifth day of October. Congratulations to you, and we'd be glad for you to speak. But because of the sheer number of you, I think after we present this, we'll go outside and have a picture made there, okay? So.
On behalf of Nabo, Alabama, we want to say thank you. We don't want to tie up all of your meeting, but as you mentioned, Nabo, our platform here in Alabama is to expand the visibility, access, resource for women business owners across the state. And these women represent small businesses across the state. So thank you very much for allowing us to be here.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. James? Yeah, you all women look good out there. And not just you, well, all you all doing in the community, but, you know, kids really need to look, especially young ladies need to look at y'all to see, you know, there are role models I can be like and everything. I would like to get y'all website because I would like to know more information, and I'm sure that the citizens would like to know more information too, and how could they join, especially if they have, you know, they have a woman-owned business.
Yes, thank you. Don't want to be the best kept secret anymore. And thank you for asking that question. We do have a program called Next Gen, which supports high school as well as university and college students, and being able to help them grow their business or also if they're in the ideation stage, to support them in that as well. And want to say thank you to Councilman Penn, who's already started that effort and being a resource for us. Thank you.
And what's the website?
Nabo.org. N-A-W-B-O dot org.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn. Mr. Penn, Ms. Gregory.
Dr. James, I really want to thank you so much. We had the opportunity to have a really great meeting, and what you're doing is inspiring a generation. My daughter, I spoke to you about it. Every time we watch anything, she want to see representation. Like, she was mad. She was like, Councilman Gregory is the only woman up here on this council. It's a problem, Dad. We got to do something. And so we, yeah, I believe so. And so I was so honored to be a sponsor of the Next Gen. I think the deadline for the application is October the thirtieth, and you can apply, go and apply, and I'm sponsoring some women to be a part of this great program. And we have to be intentional. We have to be intentional. And so that's my desire, that's my commitment, and then we're going to keep it going as long as I'm in this seat. Thank you, Dr. James.
So at this time, Bob Hope will introduce.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Gregory.
Just very quickly, Dr. James, I do want to congratulate you all. I had seen some of your posting on Facebook, so a lot of that got out there, and just congratulations on everything you were doing. And any information that you all have that we can help you promote, please send it to Ms. Lambert, our clerk, and she will pass it along, and we can put it in our newsletters, potentially at some of our district meetings. We could have some speakers come, because we get a wide variety of people who come to our meetings, and a lot of folks might be interested in learning more about what you all do. And I know that you work closely with the chamber as well. I saw Danette here with you, so just thank you for what you're doing and how you are inspiring women in the Next Gen to become part of owning their own businesses, in particular women. And I want to thank Cory's daughter for noticing that I am the only woman up here. And hopefully that will inspire others to get involved. So thank you all very much. Definitely, yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, so at this time, Bob Hope will introduce the Finance Department Employee of the Month.
Good morning. Mr. President, Vice President, and the rest of the council. You know, since I've been here, and maybe even before, we weren't really too active in Employees of the Month for the Finance Department, and began to feel a little bit of heat about that. But anyway, rightfully so. But we started talking about it, and we think, you know, the department does a great deal for the city. We, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on this morning, but we wanted to start today by recognizing one of our employees from the Revenue Department. Revenue is really important to it, as probably you can imagine, because without it, not much we can do. But today, we're going to introduce Sean Skinner as our Employee of the Month, and Donna's going to give a brief introduction of what he does, and then we'll make you work.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Sean, we'd like to award you fluid and max for October. Sean has been employed with the city since two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, he was promoted to License Investigator, and this last year, he was promoted to the Customer Service Supervisor. Sean is a leader. He is someone who creates an inspiring vision and then promotes, then motivates and inspires others to achieve them. He goes above and beyond each day in the Revenue Department. He is someone who you can always count on to get the job done. I'm continuously impressed with his dedication to the department and his extraordinary work ethic. Sean is always willing to speak up and share ideas to help make the department run more efficiently. He is always up for a challenge, and his work is exceptional. So on behalf of the city of Mobile and the Revenue Department, I congratulate Sean. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Mr. President.
Mr. John.
Yeah, I just want you to come back in a year as a Customer Service Supervisor. I want to see which of us has more hair left at the end of that year.
Yeah, monthly finance report.
Okay, good morning again. You know, usually I get up here and I talk about the, I talk about the monthly results. Okay. Yeah, as I was saying, usually I get up here and I talk about the monthly results and maybe a few other things that are pertinent to the particular time budget, the publication of the financial report. But this month, we don't have the financial results yet. In September, they're always late, recruiting the expenditures and the taxes and the revenue all through the month of October to make sure we get a credit to the right month. So it usually takes us until early November, mid-November before we can have that report published. So since I don't have it, I did want to take the time to talk about one of the other departments that work for, that work for us in finance. And I don't know if everybody knows about them, but they certainly are one of our larger departments, and they certainly have a big impact on the revenues of the city, and that is the Revenue Department. And so a little bit of what they do, you know, they are pretty much overseeing the source of all the different revenues, whether it be payroll, whether it be taxes, whether it be just about any source of revenue that comes in. And why is that important? Because really, just about all the revenue that they bring in has an impact on all the different business units that we have. We have safety, we have fire, we have Public Works Administration, City Council. All the revenue that they bring in really is distributed and managed and collected in the Revenue Department, one way or another. So I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the areas of revenue that they have an influence on that I don't ever talk about up here on a regular basis. And the first one really is, is property tax. Property taxes come into the Revenue Department, and they're a big source of revenue for us. They're about twenty-five million dollars a year. They usually all come in in January, and that's why January is our biggest revenue month and usually always our best month in performance-wise. But that's one of the things that comes into it. The other one is taxes. When I talk about taxes, I always talk about sales tax. It seems like every month, that's all we talk about is sales tax because that's our largest source. But we have twenty-seven different other taxes that we collect during the course of the year. It could be real estate, it could be gas, it could be motor vehicle, it could be lease tax, rental tax, you know, I could go on and on and on. So that's, that's one of the key areas that we focus on. Then there's business licenses. I've talked a little bit about that, but business licenses have been a remarkable achievement for the Revenue Department this year, and I'm going to go over the numbers in just a second. And then we have other things like service fees. We have thirty different service fees, things like inspections, franchise fees, towing, vehicle auctions, things of that nature. Not a whole lot of revenue, but nevertheless, it has to be collected, and it goes through the Revenue Department. Now, I want to talk about a couple of revenue sources in particular, and I mentioned it before, but I want to mention this one again because it has been such a success for us over the past, over the past year, and that is business licenses. In two thousand and twenty-one, we had a budget for business licenses of thirty-eight million dollars. And unfortunately, we only, we only collected thirty-six million. But this year, we put a different attention on it. We've got guys out there and gals out there in the department. They're tracking them, they're making sure that companies have business licenses, they're making sure that they get paid. Our budget this year was thirty-seven million, but so far through the year, we've collected forty-four million, and we're already just about seven million dollars ahead of plan for business licenses. And I really have to attribute that to the Revenue Department because they're the ones out there collecting, collecting that money. There's another one out there, lodging. I haven't talked about lodging before, but, you know, I have to say that lodging has been another success. We had a budget this year of about four-point-eight million dollars, and so far this year, we've collected eight million dollars compared to last year, where our budget was two-point-seven million, and we only collected six-point-two. And so that's something that I thought was a significant achievement this year, because, you know, not everybody is paying their taxes, and when they don't pay, it's for them to go out and initiate, initiate, take, take the initiative to get it collected. Sometimes that's a matter of driving out there and meeting the people, sometimes it's a matter of taking it to the attorney, sometimes it's a matter of taking it to court. We have very few like that, but nevertheless, not everybody is a perfect customer, and we do have to go out and collect. It reminds me, my first job, my first job was in the credit department of an old steel company, and the first thing they said, Bob, all we want you to do is make sure that everybody we sell on credit pays within thirty days, and if they don't, it's your job to go out there and collect the money. And that's what I did for about eight years. So, so it's a, it's a, it's really, it's a people-oriented job, and it's also one that requires repetition and continuous attention. The other initiative that they're working on right now, and I just want to talk about this one, is our NASIS, and NASIS is National American Industry Classification System. So for all of our different businesses that we tax, we expect licenses for, we have a code for them. And, and it really is depending upon what they do. Well, in our current system, we have twelve-hundred different NASIS codes. You might think, but, that's a lot? Well, you know, many cities have half of that or less than half of that, and we have a target now to get maybe four-hundred. And we've been working, they've been working real hard with the Legal Department to redefine those codes, and really what it's going to do is allow us to simplify the process, become more efficient, and more competitive with everybody else in the city, and also hopefully more effective in collecting those licenses. Those are some of the Those are some of the things that they do. You know, they, they sit at the desk, you know, they issue, they issue licenses, these upstairs on the second floor. That's what Sean, Sean, Sean went back to work. Well, anyway, that's what, that's what he does. And so, they're the, they're the face of the customer, and they're there on time. And so, all in all, you know, I just, we don't talk about it, we always talk about budget, we talk about the results, but really, there's these behind-the-scenes departments, and the Revenue is one that really does a great job. And they've got a great leadership with Donna, with Cindy Sims, Kenneth Mosley, who are the two managers up there. And if you ever see them, if you ever feel like, if you ever get stuck on the second floor, just take a right when you get off the elevator and go over there and introduce yourself. You'd be surprised at what all they do. So, anyway, that's all I have for this one.
And of course, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Holt, thank you for that overview of, of the departments. Very interesting. We, to go back to the fees for a minute. On occasion, on very few occasions, we've had some discussion about whether the administration might review, have a comprehensive review of the fees it charges. I don't, I don't recall that ever being done. It may have been done, I just, I don't recall it. But, you know, we're in a period now of relatively high inflation, and our expenses continue to increase. And I would certainly like to suggest that the administration review all of the various fees we charge to see if it would be appropriate to increase any of those fees. I suspect, although I don't know, once again, is my speculation, that we've got some fees that are set so low that it costs us more to collect the fee than the fee itself. And as I say, I don't know that's the case, but, but I, if we have not done a systematic review of the fees and compared them to similarly situated municipalities, I would suggest.
You know, actually, that's kind of what they're doing right now. And it's, but like I said, we've got a couple of over a thousand different categories for issuing fees, and we're, that's what we're really trying to do, to streamline and make it more effective. But, you know, to get, you know, also, one thing I really didn't mention, you know, one of the things that they really focused on, focused on this year was really going after delinquencies. You know, and delinquencies is, you know, something that hits home. I understand what delinquencies mean, and they have put a lot of effort on collecting revenue that should have come in and say 2018, 2019, 2020. And, you know, just, just this past year, we've collected probably almost $6 million in delinquent fees that should have been paid between the years of 2018 and 2019. It's not to say we've collected everything, but we've collected a lot. And, and really what it means is you've just got to put people on it, make the phone calls, take the steps to contact the people who owe the money, and get it. And, you know, it really, you know, $6 million here, $5 million here, $2 million here, it adds up, you know, and it can do a lot to help the city in the long run. And I think we want to continue to put more pressure on that part of the city.
Anything for the council. Thank you, Mr. Holt.
I do have a proclamation this morning, and I wondered if Jennifer Lopez could join me here at the podium? As you all know, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and last week, we talked about it and had a little bit of a celebration, so today, we are continuing. And I want to also make sure that everybody is aware that the Making Strides Walk is this coming Saturday. So, with that in mind, whereas it is estimated that nearly 300,000 new cases will be diagnosed, I'm sorry, 300 million new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year alone, with more than 51,000 of those lives being lost to this terrible disease. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among United States women, and it's the second-leading cause of death from cancer among women after lung cancer. It is also the leading cause of cancer death among Black and Hispanic women, yet with education, early detection, and innovative treatments, it can be defeated. Whereas declines in breast cancer mortality have been attributed to better and more targeted treatment and early detection through mammography. Whereas we can all play an important role in winning this fight by raising awareness of this disease, its warning signs, and the importance of screenings through encouraging all women to find out if they are at increased risk as a result of, of family history or other factors, and also to speak with their healthcare providers and get regular mammogram screenings. And whereas this month also provides the opportunity to honor those who've lost their fight to this disease, the courageous survivors who have and are still prevailing against it, and all the members of the medical community who work every day to defeat it. And whereas working together, we can and will conquer this disease. Now, therefore, I, Gina Gregory, Councilmember District 7, along with the members of this City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Mobile. And I just want to thank you all for coming this morning, and I have a proclamation for you. But I also hope that you will give us some more information about the Making Strides Walk this weekend, so that everybody knows it is not too late, and it starts in Spanish Plaza this year, right? Spanish Plaza, new location for the walk to start. Come on out, wear your pink, and get dressed up and walk to help promote the idea of making strides against breast cancer. So, here is your proclamation. Why don't, why don't you go ahead and say a few words, and then we'll get a picture.
Good morning, again, Jennifer Lopez with the American Cancer Society. And I'm so honored to be here with Morgan Kennedy, our President of the Board, and our immediate past President, Marie Dickinson. What you're doing when you partner with us as the City of Mobile with the American Cancer Society is not only improving lives of people who otherwise wouldn't have access to treatment and services, you're also saving lives by teaming up with us to fund critical research. And in the climate that we're in, you know, people are having to choose between gas money and food and rent. And imagine yourself, unlike us here today, perhaps, or we're very healthy and we're here, people who are sick are having to choose to put gas in their car to go to treatment or not. And so, what you're helping us to do is to provide lodging and those critical funds for the tangible, immediate need in this community. We're funding healthcare systems in this community. And I want to thank you for what you're doing. It's an important work, saving lives. So, kudos to, to you guys. Our, we had Real Men last year, Mr. Penn, we have Mr. Small this year, and I've just recruited Mr. Batiste. So, I have a little gift here for both of you, and I want to thank you so much on behalf of the American Cancer Society.
Thank you for all that you all do. Ms. Kara.
Ms. Lopez, when you finish with that picture, could you tell me if the route changed this year for the walk?
Um, yeah, the route this year starts at Spanish Plaza at 7:00 a.m., and we really, I would, I would mess you up, because I'm not good with directions. The website has the route with the map. I wish I could explain it, but it's, it's going to be better. I'll just tell you that, it's going to be better. Maybe, maybe you know more about the route, but it, it's, it has changed a bit, but you just follow the pink.
I, I just want to know if it still comes down Broad Street or not, because of the fact that...
Oh, by your house. Well, I'm going to sign you up for Real Men Wear Pink, and you can just come out and walk with us. Be careful asking me questions.
Well, yes, ma'am, but does it still come, Broad is cut off at government. Does it come canal to Broad?
Yeah, and, and depending on the weather, too, things could change. So, what we ask people to do is just stay abreast via the website for the first ride.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can send you an email later when I get a better update.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lopez, can you give us that website for the general...
Yes, it's Making Strides of South Alabama, and just Google it. I can't give you the exact website, Making Strides of South Alabama. And of course, our overarching website is cancer.org. We are leading the fight in the world to attack cancer from every anger, angle, every life, every cancer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yeah, while you're still here, CJ and Chief, if y'all would come so that you can get your hoodie bags here, and we want to get a picture of you as well.
Ms. Penn. Now, clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on January 7, 2023, at Bragg Mitchell Mansion, and October 30 on Cody Road North.
So.
They're properly moving the second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to declare the, the structures at 2070 Victory Drive West, 27, 2715 Collins Street South, and 2901 Imogen Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Just open up the public hearing for these said properties. If anyone present that would like to address the council on these properties, you may do so by stepping down to the podium and giving us your name and your address.
Good morning, my name's Timothy Foot, and I live in New Hampshire. I own, um...
Your physical address?
Excuse me?
Your physical address.
Uh, 748 Loudon Ridge Road, Loudon, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
I own the property, I'm part owner of 2070 Victory Drive West. And I'm here to ask for time to get that property back online.
How much time do you need?
Well, I, I'm a truck driver, I travel from New Hampshire to here, and I'm, about every four to six weeks, I'm here for a couple of weeks. So, I had three houses that was damaged with that last hurricane, and this was the last house. And it had the most damage, so I worked on the other two houses, and I'm trying to get to this one.
And 60 days is good enough for you?
Excuse me?
60 days?
I would say a little longer. I, I, I could work on it, I'm, I'm not coming back till November 30th. I'm leaving Wednesday to go back home, so I got to get back to work driving a truck. I've been coming here for 17 years, and I never had a problem, but I just have my hands full. Being from New Hampshire, I get taken advantage of by contractors and rental agencies. So, I do most of the work, or actually, all the work myself. And so, if you could give me a little more time, I can do the best I can.
Mr. David. Still, he would need to pull a permit also, correct?
That is correct. We don't have a permit on, on file right now. And the one thing that we would like to do is have a permit issued, and then begin the repairs to this specific structure. And, and we can get, that should be able to be done within the next 30, 60 days, whichever council would like to do. Once he begins repairs, then we can continue on through the Building Inspection Department, and we'll monitor to make sure we have final compliance.
So, pretty much, is this house, is this really just open up to the public, or, or what?
This particular house was damaged during the hurricanes, a couple of years, year and a half ago. A limb fell on the roof, so the roof is damaged, exterior wall. So, there's, there's substantial damage to this structure that does need to be repaired.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and, I'm going to ask the council to pretty much let us over for 60 days, and if you could go ahead and get your permit, to go ahead and start the working process. Even though I believe that you say you live in New Hampshire, we have neighbors that live on that street and right next door to it, they got to look at this every day. So, it's not fair for them to keep on, have to look at this piece of property every day damaged while you're living up in New Hampshire. I'm going to ask you if you could possibly just go ahead and speed up the process and try to just go ahead and get the house, you know, secure and everything. But I will ask the council to let us over for 60 days, but you need to go ahead and get a permit today. Yes, sir. They would be able to tell you exactly the steps that you need to take and everything, okay? Is NYU's president that would like to speak on these said properties? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Danny Cordy.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
City council members, Mayor and his staff, and ladies and gentlemen. Even though it's a cloudy day, it's another beautiful day in Mobile, Alabama. I know we always like to say that, but it's the truth. For the record, I'm Danny Cordy, Executive Director of the Mobile Sports Authority, and we're at 301 Government Street. And as a sports tourism arm for the city and county of Mobile, we at the MSA are proud to represent you as we continue to work to bring those visiting sporting events to our area. But I want to say we could not have achieved any, any successes without your support, and we always thank you, both city and county, City Council, the Mayor's Office, for that support. What I wanted to do today is just give you a, a summary of our recently completed fiscal year, which were on the same fiscal year as the city and the county. And for fiscal '22, which was just completed September 30th, the NSA attracted, hosted, and are supported 30 sporting events, which generated an estimated $14.3 million economic impact to the Mobile area. Now, because of the anomaly in the schedule, as some of you know, our largest event every year is the Gulf Coast Challenge Football Game, but there is no Gulf Coast Challenge Football Game that fell in fiscal '22, because it was September of '21, and the next game I'll talk about in a few minutes, coming up in a few weeks. Those 30 events, just a, a few more items, those 30 events involve 22 different sports, such as basketball, gymnastics, volleyball, baseball, track and field, wrestling, football, soccer, and yes, even a world turkey calling championship, just to, just to name a few. As another notable number that we like to look at, eight of those 30 events held in our last fiscal year, either first or second-time events, and 17 of those 30 were youth-oriented, that is, with the competitors ranging from ages four to 19. And typically, those youth events are really the ones that we try to, strive to go after the most, because they bring parents, grandparents, obviously, and we all know that. But I do want to mention, coming up in two and a half weeks, our largest event, the Gulf Coast Challenge powered by the Mobile Sports Authority, it's our fifth annual game. And this year, something special, we will feature Coach Deion Sanders, who likes to be called Coach Prime, and his Jackson State Tigers will be hosting the Alabama A&amp;M Bulldogs at Laramie People's Stadium on Saturday, November 12, 14 p.m. kickoff. Coach Prime, as you may know, College Game Day, ESPN is actually going to Jackson State this Saturday, I think for either the first or second time ever. So, anything that Coach Prime, when he's out there talking, and, and he's gotten a lot of attention as he raises the level of the HBCUs, it's going to hopefully help our game. We expect a huge crowd in town, and it could possibly be one of the largest single sporting events we've had in a decade in Mobile. For instance, over the last four Gulf Coast Challenge games, we estimate that 36,000 visitors has come, have come to Mobile and created a $17 million economic impact to our economy. Lot of other events going on, we have 20 more events coming up the rest of the fiscal year. And again, we just thank you so much for your support, and of course, we're always available to answer any questions.
Any questions for the council? Council, McCara.
Uh, got a few. First, let me put this plug in for Florida A&amp;M. Uh, College Game Day by ESPN's first visit was to Florida A and M. Second to JSU.
Okay, there you go.
Gotta give that plug, but, uh, it's absolutely astounding that they will be on JSU's campus, uh, this, uh, coming weekend. Uh, the seventeen million dollar economic impact, was that over five years?
Those are four games.
Over four games.
Right. It's over four games. That's what we estimate.
Four games.
And we're hoping this will be the largest of all of them.
Okay. Is it possible, and I don't know if the, the, um, the Sports Authority would be the one that does the economic impact study for this individual game that's coming in this weekend?
We are.
Okay. So would it be, how long would it take after the game is over to actually have those numbers in?
Councilman, it depends how quick we get the post-event report back from the, uh, Executive Director, Tim Hale. Uh, usually those numbers, it takes about thirty days at least to get that back because there's a lot of invoices to pay and, and all that. But hopefully within thirty days, we'll have an idea where, where we are.
What does the forecast look like on ticket sales?
Well, the forecast is good. I do not have a number right now, but I know, and talking to hotels in the area, I mean, hotels are filling up fast. I know the Holiday Inn where our office is has twelve rooms left on, on, I think, Saturday night and like twenty left for Friday night. So we expect a lot of the hotels to be sold out.
Okay. And still no way for us to get a forecast on ticket sales, right?
We're, we're hoping thirty thousand plus will be in the stadium. If you look at what Jackson State's average attendance is in the last few years under Coach Prime, I mean, you're getting up to forty, forty-five thousand. And of course, we all know Lad holds about forty, so it would be fantastic if we filled it up. And I think there's, there is a, a chance that can happen.
Pretty awesome. Danny, I appreciate you this morning.
Thank, thank you all.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
And I want to thank you so much for everything that you are doing here in the city of Mobile. Of course, and you represent the county as well, but it's just pretty amazing what the Gulf Coast Challenge has been doing. We're excited about it. I think recently with Jackson State, they, uh, for their homecoming, had almost fifty thousand people.
That's right.
Thirty thousand outside. You know, and this in Jackson State. We, that, that shows you what's possible, especially with everything that we have in Mobile, what the opportunity going forward with the Gulf Coast Challenge is amazing. And plus all the different sports that you, you're mentioning. Thank you for everything that you're doing and whatever we can do to support, let us know.
And as I mentioned, thank you all for the support. We're always available. You know where you can reach me.
Mr. President.
Uh, Carroll.
Can I come back now that we've finished with the Jackson State Alabama A and M game? Uh, the city of Mobile was able to put a little money into a budget for a second HBCU game in twenty-three. And we look forward to working with you and the promoters. Uh, also, when the county, uh, tells us what they're gonna do to be a portion of this, it'll be instrumental. But for Lad Stadium not to host but one, but two HBCU games of this caliber in the city of Mobile in, in a year is monumental to us. And I really appreciate all the help that you, you're providing there also as we work forward to trying to get this second game.
And we're striving very hard to get that second game in here next year, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cordy. Uh, that weekend would be a very, um, or that week would be a very busy weekend in Mobile. And for many people saying there's nothing to do in Mobile, there are a lot of free activities in Mobile that we could do. So we're looking forward towards, um, the second weekend of November. Madam Clerk?
Deshira Carey.
Greetings, President, Councilmen, and Vice President of the Council, as well as Councilmembers and other dignitaries. Um, I'm actually coming on behalf of Williamson High School Abbotsey, Abbotsey Group in regards to inquiring upon the land, um, which is creating the landlot situation from what we're understanding and the school system not being able to continue with the building of the on-campus or the on-site stadium. So, um, we've written a letter.
I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off. Can you give us your name and your address?
Hi, my name is Deshira Carey. I'm actually, um, I actually fall under District Seven. My address is sixty-six twenty-one Sweet Bay Court, Mobile, Alabama, three six six one eight. But a letter actually was written on behalf of the Mayville community, as well as for those citizens, students, and other parishioners in the particular area. Um, we were actually inquiring to see if the city would allow or take into consideration, um, donating that particular land, which has been used for over thirty years, um, in which a track and field currently sits, as well as a student parking lot is already there. Also, um, approximately six years ago, there was actually an Olympic-sized, um, track and field placed there and approved, um, by the then, um, District Councilman at the particular time, Manzi. And also it was something in which, um, Robert Battles, as well as the Superintendent Martha Peak at the time, approved, signed off and approved on. So we're just trying to see if there was any way that that land would be able to be donated to the school to, in order to advance and speed up the situation where we're coming to understand the land is causing the school to be landlocked, so there's no way possible for them to be able to move forward on that. There's a letter that is actually, um, to be sent, and I actually have the letter and will be forwarding that to you as well, Mr. Carroll, um, for District Two. Um, and I actually have a hard copy of everything that will be sent for your consideration.
Mr. Carroll, you'd like to respond?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, I was fortunate, I was fortunate enough to attend a meeting, um, with this group, uh, I want to say maybe two, three weeks ago. Uh, at that meeting, I actually had to leave for another meeting that was downtown and didn't know how close that would be. Uh, first, let me start off by saying is, is that I have no problem with trying to find a way to support Williamson High School having a campus on stadium. However, as I said in that meeting and as I've discussed with other people before, the property that you're requesting is park property. And park property has, can be very difficult to sell or transfer because of the rules around it. However, there are ways that it can be done where the city still owns the property or, uh, the procurement process is done in a way to where the integrity of property is protected as park property. But in order for me or this council or the administration to get involved, I think it would be prudent that the school system or its representatives send us a letter requesting for, uh, our assistance to get in, to be involved with this. Uh, I don't mind at all. I think Williamson deserves a campus on stadium, on, on site. And I mean, a stadium on campus on that site. Um, as we all know, the current track sits on probably seventy-five percent of Harmon Park's property and was built probably thirty years ago or a, a little bit less than thirty years ago, maybe even during the Dow administration. So there's a, there's a public, uh, academic partnership that already exists there. Now, a lot would have to go into it and I'd be getting into the weeds if I was telling you about deeds and restrictions and encumbrances and all of those things. But I'm very in favor of trying to help you. But the first step is, is have Ms. Dillahay or the superintendent request the, the assistance of myself or the administration to start the process to where we can look at a way to, to get you the resource and the help that you need so that we can do some type of venture together as the municipal being that we are. And also you guys as the education force that are in the city.
Thank you very much. As I, um, and I have noted also in the letter as well, because there's an example of something that was done very similar in Jefferson County as well that falls under park property being able to be sold.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Like I said, there, there are some state statutes that govern, and I'm pretty sure some of the municipalities may have done the work before.
Yes.
But as always, you know, different municipalities have little hiccups that we have to overcome. You know, there could be deed restrictions on the deed and things like that that would have to be truly cleared up. But again, I'm on your side. And you know, I want Williamson to have a stadium on campus. So, uh, I'm all for that. But again, in order to start a clear process, we have to have all minds going in the same direction.
Okay.
So there needs to be a request, uh, coming from Ms. Dillahay or from the superintendent. And I've talked to Ms. Dillahay, by the way. We've walked the site together one morning about six or six-thirty. We've looked at a lot of different options on the property. Uh, I've even, you know, gone back to probate court and looked at a few things too. So, I mean, I kind of know what you're, what you're looking for.
Thank you.
But again, we've got to start the process in the right manner so that we can get you or get the school system and the community and everybody on the same, same page.
No problem. We're not opposed to doing so and thank you for your consideration this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, I want to recognize, thank you from, um, alumni from Williamson. Just wave your hand just to recognize. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Reverend Jim Flowers.
Good morning, Mr. President. Uh, my name is Jim Flowers. I'm rector of All Saints Episcopal Church, one fifty-one South Anne Street in Mobile. Resurrection at its etymological root in the Kornate Greek, the language of the New Testament, means literally to stand with dignity. That means that resurrection is not only something that happened some two thousand years ago, but a present reality. It is a vocation for all people of conscience, all people of faith, to attend to those who have been deprived of well-being and dignity by those more privileged, by those who have power. As people of faith, our vocation is to raise people up into a community of equals. That is the call of the gospel, pure and simple. This council took an historic and historic step toward that end by its approval of our, of four majority black voting districts in the city of Mobile. We took a giant step towards granting a voice to those of us who haven't had a voice in matters of our public life for centuries. I'm proud of this council for that. Proposed annexation affects that process. It is vital that annexation, annexation respects and protects the racial balance achieved by redistricting. I've heard the early proposals of annexation, impressive. It preserves the black majorities in the four districts, but it dilutes slightly the at-large majority of black voters. For any annexation, that has to be a prominent consideration. And then there's the financial reality. For decades, city budgets have withheld allocations to historically black districts. We see it in the infrastructure. Black neighborhoods are visibly underserved, drainage issues, broken sidewalks, lighting. It's my understanding that, that, that annexation didn't pass this council in two thousand nineteen because of this disparity of funding. That has to change. A more equitable sharing of funds with the disenfranchised of our city has to be a part of any annexation initiative. We don't need to grow the city's population without taking care of the residents we already have. And for trust's sake, this process must be truly transparent. I just attended the premiere of Margaret Brown's powerful and truth-telling documentary, Descendant. It chronicles the systemic decimation of the Africatown community. It brings to light Mobile's dark secret, that secret being we never had a problem with race. As you know, this documentary is being aired by Netflix. It will be viewed by a formidable national audience. We will become a symbol of what racism looks like in the United States, whether we like it or not. But that's an opportunity. All eyes will be on us, but we have the opportunity to do what is right. Justice has to be the means here, good people. Your job, our job, is to raise up those among us who for centuries have been cast down. It's the new America that's emerging as we speak.
Reverend Flowers. Yeah, I appreciate you so much, man. Your three minutes has, uh, expired. And, uh, do thank you so much for coming down. Uh, as you know.
Mr. President, I, um.
Hold on, Mr. Penn.
Oh, my bad. Oh, I said, well, I've got one minute.
Oh. What? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, he had one minute? No.
He's granting a minute.
Oh, he want to give him one minute? Mr. Penn want to just give you one minute, additional minute?
Well, I, I only need about five seconds. Uh, well, I've heard, well, let's see. I wasn't expecting this. Um, your job, our job, is to raise up those among us who for centuries have been cast down. It's the new America that is emerging as we speak. We see it everywhere. Resurrection is afoot. So let us be a generous and just presence in this process, so long overdue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Flowers. And also I thank you so much for coming down, um, Reverend Flowers. Um, I had, a couple of days ago, I read a press release where someone had put out backdoor meetings and stuff like that. And I'm not, we're not sure they referring to the meeting that I hosted, which Reverend Flowers had attended along with the administration, the former mayor of Mobile, other state representative, NWA CP, um, and some other stakeholders throughout Mobile. And I hope that they wasn't referring to the meeting that I had. But the point is, even, you know, Reverend Flowers was there, you know, it's about having transparency with the administration. And again, I thank Reverend Flowers for coming down this morning because as I had stated to the group earlier, you know, before the administration rolls out anything, let's go ahead and tell them what the things that we are looking for and the things that we are not looking for. This is the time to do it. Uh, from my knowledge, the administration have their doors wide open. Nothing has not been rolled out into the general public. And from my knowledge, has not been no backdoor meeting. And CJ would not be a part of no backdoor meeting. You know, um, annexation came across this, that several times. Uh, since this administration, annexation had passed one time, uh, to take in a neighborhood. It was, uh, by six and one, I was the only council person, uh, that voted against that annexation. Uh, the other six voted for it. I think it was back in thirteen, fourteen. But I'm not against annexation, it just got to be done correctly. Nobody brought CJ. CJ has a job, CJ has a career. Nothing can come across here that anybody cannot buy me at all. So I just want to put that statement out there. But again, inner citizen that have any concerns, any thoughts about annexation, and if I'm telling to tell Chief Barber, tell me now, they can contact Chief Barber, Candace, Keisha Brown, and tell them their desires, their concerns, what they like, what they don't like right now before anything be rolled out. You know, I don't want this process be just a long drawn-out process. Let's go ahead and just kill what need to be killed now or add what need to be added right now. And again, I do, uh, appreciate Reverend Flowers for coming down and also invite others to come down and also contact the administration and the council. My doors is always open, but please, I ask, don't put out mis-
Communication.
Communication out there and have people mind messed up. False information. That's wrong.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll and Mr. Penn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, may I also state that I am very unbought and unbossed? So let you know that upfront. I mean, I don't owe nobody nothing, ain't nobody paid me nothing. And I can tell you that I sure got here in a different kind of way, the way my campaign went. So let's be reminded of that. Uh, I too read the correspondence that was put out by, um, a group or a press release that was put out by a group and was very much disappointed in what I read and, and the statement of backdoor meetings and backroom meetings. But when you are invited to the meeting yourself, you're present at the meeting and participating, uh, you give comment at the meeting, I, I don't think that's very, uh, backroomish. I think that, that you were there. And to make, uh, statements of insider, uh, there's nobody insider there. I mean, the thing is, is that if you're a member of a group and represent a group and you have people that you're representing that you want to get information out to, then that's the way you do it. We get everybody in the room. And if I remember a statement from a certain minister that came here said, what do you do when you're in the room? And how do you react when you leave the room? I guess I'm seeing now how some of us react when we leave the room. If the room doesn't necessarily build a camp. if the room doesn't necessarily build a consensus that you may think it needs to be building for yourself at this point in time, or whatever thoughts that you may have for the entire group at this time. Annexation is a very, very, very difficult thing. Right now, we don't even know what it looks like. It's changed five, six, seven, eight times since we first looked at it the first time. Five times since I gave you the ra- the racial backups and split-ups that I gave you when I talked to you about it, about twenty-six thousand people that, that they were looking at, twenty-five thousand people that we're looking at. We don't know everything. And to put out information that is declared rock solid is unjust and not necessarily true. We don't, we don't want to do that. We know that this city needs to grow at some point. We know that it needs to grow from within even more so than without. But we know that we have to have the without in order to doggone, to protect the within at the same time. Um, I'm not against annexation. I, I think I said on November first, standing right there at that podium, that there's a certain process that we needed to go through before we even decided to take a look at annexation, and that was redistricting first. If we could get that right, then we can move on to annexation. But annexation must be done right and correctly in order for us to, to look at it. If it comes and it's wrong and it doesn't work, then we may not vote for it. But if it's right, then it deserves an opportunity. I think the rallying cry in redistricting is, is why can't we just do what's right? I mean, why can't we do what's right? Why do we have to bargain for what's right? Now, the shoe's on the other foot this time, it seems like. But we still have to do what's right for the city and what's right for each individual district as we go forward. So as we get closer to what we think we may have, then I would hope that everyone in each group that was part of any of these meetings, give the input that is needed for the possible change that you'd like to see, instead of just speculating what some, what the administration and the council might put it out there. If you know something, you know an area, you know a group, you know people that wanna come in, then let's get that information to us. If you have a community that wants a petition to come in, then get that to us, if it helps us try to meet the goal that we're trying to meet. And the other thing is, is we can only annex up to the number of people that we can support financially in this district too. So we gotta consider all of those things also. There are a lot of different components to this, lots of them. And, and right now, if we had the answer, probably already be looking at you. Lastly, I asked the mayor on the Tampa trip, uh, Jim, and you weren't there. There's a meeting tonight at six o'clock at Friendship. And I asked, uh, that we provide the current information that we have on annexation at this meeting tonight. Uh, he wrote it down. I don't know if he told you, but we need to send somebody out there so they can at least answer some of the questions that they have where we currently are, what, what information we currently have. That may even change as we continue to go through this process, looking at neighborhoods, numbers, petitions, and those types of things. So, we can make that happen again for tonight. I would be very appreciative. Uh, you might wanna also follow up with America, CJ and I mentioned it to him, I think, what was that, Sunday in Tampa? So to make sure that the information will be available for this meeting tonight at Friendship at six o'clock. Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. President for the time.
Mr. Davis, and Mr. uh, excuse me, Mr. Penn and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I would like to commend you for leading this council. You stepped out. You invited stakeholders to try to, let's figure this out, let's work together. I commend you for doing that. So thank you so much for being a great leader and president of this council. But that being said, Reverend Flowers, almost everything basically you said, I truly understand. You started out by saying about, you know, scripture in your faith, where as a man of God, I'm the same way. And the scripture tell us that thou shall not lie. That's one of the first commandments. And so now we see thou shall not lie. Why would we put false information out without having truth? And that's sad, not saying you did it. Whoever put in, any information out without having truth, especially when someone was putting information into bring stakeholders so we could figure it out. Because if you just bring the whole city in Mobile and say, hey, let's hear your ideas, we'll be there all day. But if you get stakeholders, people who already was talking with redistricting and, and ha- have a voice in different organizations, now you can now get something together. Now you can present it to the public and then you can move forward. And I believe that what Councilman Small done and done an amazing job. I was disappointed. I was disappointed in a lot of ways, a lot of, you probably can hear it in my voice. Uh, my emotions this past week have, have been a, it's been crazy because I saw the film just like you saw. I was disappointed. I was disappointed how we allowed this. And Mobile, and I said it before, Mobile has an opportunity to create change and move the city forward. We can do the right thing by making sure that the cities that underserved can have the resources, the drainage, the roads. I agree, we need to make sure we have all those things before we can look at expanding. And so it should be a plan, it should be something in place. But at the same time, we have to work together to create that and not just fight against each other, but sit and talk. And that's what Councilman Small put in place. Now, if we can't do that, then we will never move the city forward. Now, it, I, this, this statement might hurt some people, but the truth of the matter is that many of these communities that we sit up here and we upset about have been led by people who we voted for. Twenty-four, twenty-five years, these are people we voted for. And now we upset, and now we come here and say, y'all do something in a year. We got a year to do something and it, and it been messed up for fifty, sixty-plus years. No, what we have to do, if we don't come together and move and connect and create a plan for Mobile to move forward, our community is gonna continue to look like that. Now, you don't like, I, I agree with Councilman Small, I agree with Councilman Carroll. Listen, you go look at my history, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a public servant, teacher. Work in the community. I'm here because I wanna see my community different. If people vote me out next time, guess what? I did, I did the best I could to change, 'cause every day I gotta see the kids' faces. Every day. How many people in here, you go see a hundred kids every day? Not just in the community, but church, schools. I gotta see their face and I gotta see how they're living. But we can't come together, we wanna fight and we wanna argue instead of figuring this out together. That's mobileans. We wanna put false information out. We don't wanna be truthful and say, oh, it is a race issue. Is, is, we, it-
Comment from the county.
We gotta understand that it is. You can't deny it. So guess what we have to do? We have to come together, acknowledge the problem first, and then now let's move forward. But we have to have everybody on the same page. So again, as you see, I'm a little emotional because I'm tired. And I'm sure we all tired. But if we want our city to move forward, we gonna have to do it together. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Davis?
I just wanted to make one thing absolutely clear. When the annexation proposal came to us last time, the administration produced some numbers that indicated that our tax revenues would significantly exceed the additional expense of bringing in the residents of the areas we were talking about. In other words, the net revenue was accretive. Leave aside the grants, there was a lot of talk about grants, being able to get bigger grants. Leave aside that. The tax revenue would significantly exceed the additional expense. So the reason it was defeated last time didn't have anything to do with whether there was gonna be additional revenue, which could have been spent in all seven ci- city council districts. Didn't have anything to do with that. I will not support any proposal for annexation that does not clearly produce incremental additional net revenues for all of the citizens of Mobile. All of the citizens of Mobile. Every single corner of the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of points that, again, we've missed. First and foremost, we're not voting on annexation. We talk about doing the right thing. We're in America. The right thing is to allow the people of this nation, of this state, of this city, the right to have their voice heard. That's what we're voting on. Giving the people in West Mobile the right to tell us if they wanna be a part of our city or not. We're merely giving them the right to vote. We talk about timing. We don't have time to wait. I don't know if y'all saw, we talk about articles. There was an article that came out last week about Birmingham, and the very issue that they suffer from today is their inability to grow. They are now landlocked. And they're hemorrhaging dollars and people. And that's exactly what Mobile has done for twenty years, is hemorrhage people. And a lot of those people are moving out to the county that we're about to shut down and draw a line forever and not give us the ability to ever expand and bring those people into Mobile. And that will have consequences for the future of this city and its viability to continue in the state that it is in right now. We talk about funding the underserved communities. And I don't see Bob here. Chief Barber, I would ask you to do a, a breakdown. I wanna know how much money of our taxpayer dollars on an annual basis go into what districts? 'Cause I know how much goes into District Six. And if you think it's coming into my district, I will bet my annual salary on it. Yet that's not happening. If we don't act now, Sims is already expanding. Sims is already annexing. And you can forget about Mobile having the opportunity to expand. You can start calling that area either Sims, West Mobile Incorporated, or Theodore. I had three communities in West Mobile, we talk about race, there's two sides of that coin too. Three communities asking why can't they annex, because they want their voice heard. My answer to them was, you are too white. You, we, we cannot, no- This, this, this comment needs to be heard because this is the truth. We hear one side of the coin and not the other. The other side is, we can't bring communities that wanna come into this city, into this city, because it will upset the balance of the demographics and legally, we cannot do it. But what this city needs to understand is there are people that want to come into this city that aren't black. And the reality is, it's not got a thing to do with race. They wanna have their voice heard so they can make a difference in the direction that this city goes. And you can get upset or that or not, that's the truth. And I'll send you to the people that you, if you wanna talk to them, I'll put you in touch with them. And you can have the same conversation that I did. Because that's the other side of this coin. That area out there, if you look, and, and we're gonna work these maps so you can see it. I grew up out there. My first house was bought in the area that we're looking to annex. And when I lived in that house, ninety-five percent of that community was white. You go in there today in that same community, ninety-five percent of that community is black. There is a demographic shift to that county area that is significantly black. And this snapshot in time doesn't show that, if you look at it today. But if you look over the twenty-year period of the evolution of the demographics of that area, you see an increase year over year over year of blacks that are moving there because they want more land, they want bigger houses, they want a car, a two-car garage. They want to have the schools that are being built brand-new, like there's two of them just going in. That's what annexation does for us. It encompasses those people that wanna live out there but still are paying taxes to the city and wanna have their voice heard. But the reality is, none of that really matters. What matters is, we are shutting out people that want their voice heard and not giving them the right to vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll?
Um, in closing this, this annexation, brief conversation, um, I, I've gotta actually speak up for Scott this time. I actually read where he made the statements to, to communities that, uh, the concentration or the demographic concentration in that area was actually too white. So that's actually a true statement, I've actually seen it, read it myself. But wh- what we got to do here is so many of the community that have lived here for sixty, seventy-plus years have a hard time, Jim, and, I mean, it, to the mayor and the administration, have a hard time with trust. And the, the level of transparency that we provide with the information that we're going through will give them or, or provide another layer of trust to where they can see what we're thinking, know where we are, know what we've been through, and, and they can kinda interject somewhat by giving their councilperson or the administration an idea based on what they're currently seeing. You know, it's been real hard for a, 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 a demographic to trust. And, and to think that there may be an idea of something that's happening without them knowing that will affect the city of Mobile for the next two generations kinda worries everybody. So if we could simply, again, put this in a forum, like even today or tonight at six o'clock, to provide some additional information so that we can have an open alleyway that fosters trust with a true transparent, a, a, additional level of transparency, as I should say, so that everyone will feel as if though they're actually part of the process and will be able to gain a little bit more trust in what we're doing from the general public and possibly move this forward a little faster than what we've been doing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
What an opening act. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Uh, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, I believe it's still morning. Um, greetings, Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Uh, I rise today to address those, uh, matters from two weeks ago, pertaining to amendments of the budget to, uh, assist with improving public safety matters uh, within the city of Mobile, um, as well as those, uh, recommendations regarding Chapter Thirty-eight of the, uh, Mobile Municipal Code. And lastly, based on the Administrative Services Committee meeting, um, suggestions towards the Civic Center project. Now, to be very clear, today on the agenda, we have about two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars going towards the Mobile Museum of Art. That's item zero eight dash nine four nine, two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, what is surprising, I am completely for that. That's the Mobile Museum of Art. The city of Mobile, something that is necessary for each of the citizens. Excuse me, to improve the quality of life here. Where my core rest is where we spend unnecessarily on items within the city, with vehicles, certain insurances, certain ideas that we just wanna try out to see if it'll work and then we'll implement it maybe in the next budget. That's millions of dollars annually that could go towards things that actually work. And to be fair, this is not to say that in time, those things that I'm calling unnecessary now shouldn't be tackled or shouldn't be addressed, they're just not priorities. So if we're gonna improve anything in this city, we've heard a lot of sentiments today about how things should be improved here. It's gonna take fiscal sound judgment. And the only way we can get there is by amending- And the only way we can get there is by amending a budget. Now, according to Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code, we're supposed to get reportings, um, on the findings within the court system each month. Now, y'all can review the clause so you can know that specifically. Uh, but to the best of my understanding, but to the best of my understanding, this hasn't been done in over a decade. So I would love to see if anyone knows anything about that. We haven't had a reporting on this in over a decade. As I mentioned before, um, there are citations that have been issued illegally to citizens. There are a lot of things that we have in place that could actually help, but we have to be able to come to the table. Now, in regards to this Civic Center piece, we know we don't have much time. I'm only 180 seconds, and that's why I said these are pre-conclusive remarks. I plan on ending this segment, uh, next week with the direct findings of what I want to present to this body. But as far as the Civic Center, and we're saying what people having to wait, Success of the Future has been waiting on $1,000 since March of 2021. $1,000. That's nothing. So we're saying entities have to wait in order to put something through so we can get the full input of citizens? There are more people that are involved than is just in the people that came to the table to meet most recently, even if that was people outside of this body as well. Why are we going against the makeup of what that entity is? There was an Elvis movie that just came out on HBO Max, Mobile, Alabama is in it. This was regular. The top stars were always coming to this place. And I have to conclude it next week. I know that certain people get more time, so we don't even have to fuss about it. Thank you for yielding the floor. See you next time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk.
Resolutions held over. 08925, approved purchase orders, orders for fuel for the Wave Transit. 08926, approved purchase orders for fuel for various city departments. 08927, approved purchase order for G A Precision LLC for four Winchester rifles for Mobile Police Department. 08928, approved purchase order C D W Government for annual renewal of multi-factor authentication, authentication software for M I T. 08929, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for length, length of fire hose. 25930, accept permanent drainage easement from Catholic cemeteries to provide future construction and maintenance access to Three Mile Creek.
So moved.
Second.
Prop to move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 01932 through 6960.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Prop to move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Um, did, we agreed to, um...
935.
935 is 60 days, right?
We just lay it over.
So, but, I, I, I mean, I'm doing it one separate. 01932, rescind resolution 01823 and de-obligate funds allocated to project, project agreement with MOSS. 03933, reappoint Tommy Carlisle to the Human Relations Commission. 31934, authorize a grant application to the University of Baltimore for the combating overdose through community-level intervention, intervention initiative grant. 40936, 937 are declaring the structures at 2715 Collins Street South and 2901 Imagering Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58938 and 939 are declaring weeds noxious and authorizing removal of weeds. Groups 1635 and 1633. 6940, approve award a special bonus to the Finance Employee of the Month. 6941, 942, 943, 944, 45, 46, uh, 45, 960 are determining an appropriation to Hope Boxing Academy. Um, appropriation to Chastain Fournier K through eight school to determine appropriation to Revelation Missionary Baptist Church, determine appropriation to United Methodist Inner City Mission of Mobile, Jubilee Youth Service Leadership Academy, and Lat People's Sports and Entertainment Complex, serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved. Prop to move in second and in discussion.
Yes, Mr. President. If any of the councils wonder what that disbursement for Lat Stadium is, it's, uh, $50,000 coming out of, uh, capital left over from previous years to, uh, correct some rust on the lights and the vertical lights before the game that happens on November 12th. Um, it's so that we can do some maintenance that's been deferred for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
49, 935, declare the structure at 27T Victory Drive West, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Rule to lay over for sister days.
Second.
Prop to move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm just laid over sister days.
C I P resolutions being introduced, 23946.
By council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 07947 through 6956.
Also, by council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings, 41957, call for public hearing to rezon property located at the south side of Dolphin Street, 520 feet, east of Sage Avenue extending to the east side of Sage Avenue extending to the west termini, termini, termini of Exter Drive and Sherwood Drive South from L B two and R three to R three scheduled November 22nd. 41958, call for public hearing to rezon property located at 2819 Government Boulevard from R one and B two to B two scheduled November 22nd. 41959, call for public hearing to rezon property located at 1263 Baker Street from R two and I two, two I two, scheduled November 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Prop to move in second and in discussion.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just, what do we need to do with, um, I guess as a question to Councilman Reynolds, are you going to put an amendment forward? And if so, that needs to be called on a public hearing as well, if you're going to do that separate from the other amendment.
Mr. President, none of these line items have anything to do with that, I don't believe.
Jones.
I, I, I didn't hear.
Uh, these items are, are not related to that.
All right. Madam Clerk. Oh.
Announcements?
Wait a minute, we didn't vote, I'm sorry. Uh, prop to move in second and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
Uh, District Six, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 15th of November at 1:00 PM, right in, in this auditorium, we'll have a Public Service Committee meeting to discuss the 310 Mental Health Board invites. Um, will be sent out to the County Commission, uh, State Legislature, State Legislators, State Department of Mental Health will also be invited, as are any other, um, mental health stakeholders in the community to attend that meeting. Um, my next District Six Community Meeting will be on the 3rd of November at 6:00 PM at Connie Hudson Center. And then tonight at 6:00 PM, we're going to have a Pinehurst Subdivision Community Meeting at the Mug Shots on Airport right outside their community. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, District One. Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past week, um, Scarborough Model Middle School located in District One won the middle school championship. We always win in District One. Um, so we're, we're excited about that victory. Um, also, we will, a reminder, we will have the Thanksgiving, November the 26th. We'll have the Tomerville Community Parade. And right after, we'll be at the Figures Community Center, free food. Come out, going to have some great information, um, that will be taking place. Um, if you'd like to play spade, please come out. I like to beat everybody, like, I love to win. So get your partner, come out, the Thanksgiving. Um, I'm ready to see you, Councilman Carroll, so have your partner ready. And so, um, we also will have some more information taking place in District One in the month of November coming soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District Five, Councilman Daze.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't know if everybody saw this, but the Alabama State Port Authority released a new study done by a third-party organization showing significant growth in jobs, tax revenue, and general economic impact related to the port of Mobile. The port is responsible for about 51,000 direct and indirect jobs around in this area and in the state. The port is also responsible for 85 billion, that's billion with a B, in dollars in economic value to the economy of the city of Mobile and the state of Alabama. State and local taxes supported by activity of the port equal $2 billion. Mobile has the fastest-growing container terminal in the country with 55% growth in volume since 2017. I've said it before, I'll say it again, I'll say it till y'all all pass out. Uh, without the port of Mobile, we don't have OSTL. Without the port of Mobile, we don't have, uh, Airbus. Without the port of Mobile, we don't have the Walmart Distribution Center. What's good for the port of Mobile is good for the city of Mobile. What's bad for the port of Mobile is bad for the city of Mobile. Uh, it is the major economic driver of our city and our region and one of the major economic drivers of the state of Alabama. It's easy to forget it. It's easy to forget it sitting over there doing its business. But it's a very, very important, uh, aspect of this city's economy. Uh, it, as I said, it's, it's not a very important, it's the primary aspect of this city's economy. We should always keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's why they call us the Port City. All right, thank you, Mr. Daze. Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. I have forwarded a, um, an amendment to the Civic Center side over to the clerk's office, and I'd ask that it be published along with the, um, Carroll and Jones amendment, just the same, so that when it does come up on the floor, we have the ability to consider all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Greater Gulf States Fair begins October 28th and runs through November 6th. And for those who live in the area, we just want to remind them that traffic will be heavy, uh, generally in the evenings. Um, I'm also talking with, uh, the Chief of Police about a traffic plan to make sure that people understand that, uh, there is a widening project going on on Ziegler Boulevard, and there are detours. So the better plan for any vehicular traffic would be to find a different route rather than going west on Ziegler. And the police department will be working on that and putting out information. We will certainly put it out as well to remind everyone, uh, to find a different route. And also, just to let people know that the fair is going on, um, and that, uh, you can go out and enjoy the fair. It's always a great time out there. Again, it is October 28th through November 6th. My Christmas meeting is coming up again. It's our annual get-together. It will be December 5th, 6 o'clock PM at the Mobile Museum of Art, which is where we regularly have this. We will again be collecting gift items for the residents of Wilmer Hall. And, uh, the Forest Hill Elementary Chorus will be performing. We will be putting out more information about that and, of course, sending out our postcards to everyone in the district to give them all the details ahead of time, including what those gift items for the residents of Wilmer Hall would, would be. So, um, that is it for now. Um, Mr. President, thank you so much. And I just want you all to take a good look at what this man is wearing. This, this pink jacket, I told him he looked like from here, he was going to the senior prom. So, um, anyway, but it's because he is, uh, a part of, real men wear pink. And I certainly appreciate, uh, what he is doing, what Councilman Penn, Chief Batiste, and everyone is doing to help raise awareness for breast cancer. These men get out and wear things that are pink, which might nor, not normally be part of their wardrobe. But they would want to come out in public wearing it anyway, because I don't know. But I appreciate everything that they are doing to, to help raise money.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real men wear pink, uh, just so long as they don't say fuchsia or some other color like that, right? Yeah, it's pretty popular. I don't mind wearing it myself. Um, first of all, I've got to say congratulations to, uh, the Descendants of Africa Town and the release of their documentary, documentary, not to the city of Mobile or to the United States of America, but the release of it to the world. Uh, the release of a story that's been somewhat only known to the people around, some of the people around our city, and most of all, to the direct descendants of the city. Uh, it's monumental to have this, their story told now and haven't heard. Uh, but it's also important that we continue to build upon what is now is truth, to provide a haven for the truth where it can be kept in our city so that other people can learn from what happened. This is a group of people that can trace their lineage all the way back to where they originated from in Africa, which is uncommon i- in what happened during the slave trades between, uh, the west coast of Africa and the United States of America. So congratulations to you guys. Thank you for inviting me out to the opening and so many other, uh, council people or whoever got their tickets off the internet that were there. Uh, it was, I was glad and thankful to be a part of that. Uh, Mr. President, we will start our, uh, District Two Community Meeting Series in December. Our first one will be the last week of November, and we will schedule it and get it out to you and let you know the route that we will like to take. Uh, I would like to start on West Street this time, being that we're doing some work there in that community. And it's been a community group that has not come back since COVID. So guys over in Flocler, West Street, uh, all in that area, please, let's get reorganized and let's get back up and running. I hope to see you all the last week in November. We will send the dates out just within the next week or two. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Carrows, and greetings to the citizens of District Three. Uh, please mark your calendars. In less than two weeks, we have our first fall meeting, uh, which will be held on Monday, November the 7th at 6 o'clock PM at the Revelation, uh, Missionary Baptist Church, uh, located in the Maesville community. We have invited several stakeholders, uh, from, uh, the Mobile Housing Board to city, uh, departments to attend this meeting. I ask, uh, citizens of Maesville and the nearby communities, if you have anything particular that you would like to address, please contact my office as soon as possible. Also, our second meeting will be held on November the 14th, which is a Monday evening also, at 6 o'clock PM at the High Show Merch Matinee School, which is located off of Government Boulevard. Again, um, asking the citizens in that particular area, if you have anything of concern that you'd like to be addressed, please contact my office at Erica 251 208 7441 or CJ dot small at cityofmobile dot R as soon as possible for we can have the correct people line up to attend those meetings. Again, those meetings are, uh, Monday, November the 7th, and also Monday, November the 14th. Again, um, all the citizens of District Three are all welcome to come. Also, um, on procs, excuse me, on, um, Tuesday, December the 13th, at 6 o'clock PM, we will have our holiday reception. Uh, we invite all the citizens in District Three, uh, please come out. We will have plenty of food, fun, and, uh, entertainment. Um, this holiday season is almost upon us, and let's make this a great holiday season. We asking, uh, citizens to bring, um, parades of items for seniors, uh, that's located in a nursing home within the district. Again, it's not mandatory that you bring anything. We just asking that you can, would you bring something? And also, our Parades of Threes, which will be on Saturday, December the 17th, at 2 o'clock PM, starting at PC Rain and with this band at Pillins Middle School. Anything else from this council?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Just a reminder, we have our entitlement committee in the council conference room at 1:00 PM. Um, we will be discussing the central business district.
Anything else from this council? Anything from administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Prop to move in second and discussion.